February 12, 2024, regular school board meeting to order. And we will note that we have some absences. Ken Anderson, Patrick Lewandowski, and Nathan Anderson are absent this evening. We still have a form of the board since there are four of us. And we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America. And to the republic of which it stands one nation, on your God, in the good as well, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have the admission statement? Wayne, please.
The mission of Holy Public Schools is to bring together students, parents, staff, and community to provide a quality education with emphasis on developing the full potential of the individual.
Thank you. And at this time, we have open forum for citizens to address the school board. I don't see that anywhere. Did wish to speak, but this is an opportunity for you if you'd like to. Okay. Let's see the hands. So we will go on to approve tonight's agenda. And we need a motion and a second. Motion by Stephanie, seconded by Wayne. All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda stands. Moving along, we have the approval of routine business items, which includes our consent agenda, which is the board bills, and approval of meeting minutes. Just an update to you that we do have updated January 16th meeting minutes at the table. What was updated is Nathan Anderson asked to have his comment put into the actual minutes. And then the motion that was made is updated to request the exact motion. So those two changes were made to the January 16th meeting minutes. So I will need a second motion and a second for the approval of the routine business items. Motion is made by Wayne, seconded by Stephanie. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are going to move on to the resolution for acceptance of gifts. And we have several donations here for the Community Ed Connect X School. And I'll just go through those. Felkin National Bank is $250. Starry Electric, $100. Zap Novak Construction, $250. Black Red Clinic, $100. Grumpy's Trucking and Garage, $250. And Lucky Lions, about $1,000. And they are all for the Community Education Fund X School. We also have $125 donated for supplies from the health office from the Christian Brothers of Moral. We have $500 donated from Holy Basketball Association for third and fourth grade basketball jerseys. $250 each from the following businesses: JR Masonry, J&amp;J Painting, Karen Holmes, and Demersky Meats. Also for third and fourth grade basketball jerseys. And Laton Metal and Iron donated $156 for the pop can collection at Holbert's for the drum line program. And we are supportive and appreciative of these donations. I would need a motion and a second. And then we're going to have a real call for motion to accept. Motion is made by Sharon, seconded by Wayne. Stephanie?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
And I would. Community Ed presentation, preschool tuition. And this is going to be Alyssa. And Alyssa also had a handout at the table for us, as well as what was in the board tab.
All right. So members of the school board, here I have a proposal in front of you to increase tuition rates for the 24-25 school year. So really, the increased tuition rate would be offset to the expenses, but revenue that we could bring in is really to just kind of balance back. The last time we increased tuition was the 2021 school year. And then just annually, we have expenses that increase as teacher salaries go up every year. So that's kind of the reason why. Here, kind of like, in your, in your, you know, clearly, the revenue, those are the expenses, and there you can see them off the balance. And then the past, the general plan would help support these. So we're really trying to get this one where it's able to support itself. And then here in front of you would be the proposed tuition for the 24-25 school year. And so really, what it is, you have half day options as well as full day options. For the half day option, it would be $25 increase per month. And the full day would be $50 per month. And then what I did was I compared to area districts and then kind of averaged those. And with our current rate, we are below the average. And then also with our proposed rates, we're at the average or slightly below the average. So we're not, like, out of line with our increased rates.
Alyssa?
Yeah.
This sheet that we got at the board table completely replaces what was in our...
It, yeah, just use that one. It's pretty much the same. There were just a few numbers that were a little off. So I just want to make sure you have the correct information. And the correct information is also online in the forward, like, agenda. And then here, we have to always provide tuition assistance for families who are in need. So then this kind of breaks down what that looks like for those families and then just provide a half day and full day options. Are there any questions?
Is this typical history of raising rates every three years, four years?
Yeah, I wouldn't reach out to other districts. That's what they tell me is like that three to four years increasing and not to have it, like, every year. No question.
On the tuition assistance, does that belong with the free and used program or is it on its own?
It's on its own. It's close, but it's a little more, especially for the full day, we don't have to write a budget for a childcare portion or preschools or readiness, you have to, like, exactly provide for. And then what is possible, like, for families who are higher in lower income or support, what we try to do is replace their tuition with scholarships. And we have two types of scholarships. We have Pathway 1, as it's called. And that is through milestones. The families have to complete an application for first milestones. And then we get, you know, more loan completion. So then I invoice milestones for every family who's wanted for, like, their tuition. So really, it's no charge for the families, which is very nice, even for that full day option, I can invoice more of that. And then Pathway 2 is, we get $22,500 yearly for that. And then that I choose are used towards families who are unable to make the payments for that. So that helps kind of balance it out for families who are... And then, and if they don't qualify for Pathway 1 or 2, we really honor them to two grades. But the nice thing is when we give them Pathway 2's scholarship, we can bill for the full allowance, we're providing the full allowance for them to apply to the scholarship.
And this is something that the families kind of apply for?
Yes, yeah.
Does the fact that we're parent aware play a part in this?
Yes, being a parent aware, we're able to get Pathway 1 and Pathway 2 scholarship. If we were not parent aware, we would not get also a full day. And so that's new work for a district. So the milestone applications and the timing, I think, you've ever do, we've gotten more and more families filling all the applications and getting accepted.
I want to thank you for all your hard work to become parent aware because in depth makes a difference.
Yes, helps me develop. And then also just completed a score, I mean, this plus application through MTE. It's going to be a potential, so they're funding source for the school, but it's not a guarantee. And they don't disclose the amount you can get, you just have to fill out some information in regards to our program. But that could be potentially an opportunity for us.
And when do you plan to implement the increase that we're receiving?
Registration is March 1st. So anyway, if our families register, start registering, we're here at preschool on March 1st. We would include that in all of our strategic information, the new grades.
Any other questions for Alyssa regarding tuition increases on preschool? Thank you. So I would need a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. Motion by Stephanie, seconded by Wayne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up is the one policy that we're requiring review and is actually discussion and in action. It's the third and final reading, a call for public comment on policy 416, which is an MSBA model policy. And it is entitled drug, alcohol, and then we had to add cannabis testing. It's a lengthy, a lengthy policy, but we've had it here at the table a couple times already and it's go through the policy committee. So it would be an action I am receiving to approve that particular policy. Is there any discussion on that policy 416? If you're in there, I would need a motion and a second, please. And I would second. Motion is made by Wayne, seconded by myself. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries to members. At this time, we have the budget and enrollment report, and I believe it's Erin from SMS. I'll give that a minute. Hi Erin.
Hello.
We are at the point of our meeting for the budget enrollment report, please. Sorry, what's that? What's that?
Needless.
I think it's a little, you know? It's not my model. Okay, so for Ken, where are you?
I'm sorry, Erin, we do have it in our pocket.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alyssa.
No, that's all right. We do have that information in our pocket. I'm certain the individuals in our audience can't see it, but we can hear you.
Okay. So we're looking at our February enrollment. It looks like we did lose just one student in that elementary school. We lost one in the middle school, high school. We actually gained a student. So overall, our enrollment is still looking great study and very close to what we projected with the state of Minnesota. So that is looking very good and right on track. And here is the budget. So first off, I just want to mention that by the time this budget report needed to be presented, we had not closed January fully yet. So we don't have our revenue that comes into our, all of our big payments from the state of Minnesota haven't been recorded in our books yet. So you'll see that reflected under that receipt, year-to-date, where it's only 8,961. It is going to be higher than that. It's just, it's not reflected in our books. It was a short turnaround this month, and we just didn't get time to get it in our system. So that one's just a little off, you know? It's not an accurate representation right now. But if you scroll down to the expenditures... Currently, our budget's at $14.5 million. As of January 31st, we've expended $6,562,000 in salaries. And benefits is almost $2.8 million. Purchased services for maintenance and items like that is $1.88 million. And supplies, equipment, giving us a total of $12,786,000 spent from the beginning of the year until... Giving us 53% of what we spent so far. And then if you just go down a little bit further, it just breaks it up by the programs where we've spent. And then we go down to our food service. $1.4 million budget. We are for revenue, we've received $757,000 of that. Community Ed, $925,000. We've received almost $600,000. And debt service, $19 million. We've received $951,000. On expenditures, we've spent about 55% of our expenditure that's budgeted for food service, about 53% for community education, debt service, $113,000. And then all fund revenue, again, $11.2 million. However, we are missing January's big payments in there. Our expenditures are at $14 million, showing a deficit of $2.9 million. However, again, just keep in mind that our really large deposits for January are not in there right now. Any questions? I don't, I don't think we have any questions for you this evening. But I was sort of more, do you have questions for Erin?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. And we have administrator information and reports. Dr. Perry, do you have anything to add?
I do.
Other than your report that's proposed yet? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. I have a few things just to mention. And one is, you know, I've talked about with our staff development committee and the REED Act. That is something that we're actively working on. And as I have reported, that our district is moving towards using core. And now it's time to start scheduling professional development. And that is something that we'll schedule into the following school years, 24, 25 school year. And it's a challenge because of the amount of time that is necessary for staff members to have to complete the training. And we're not alone. Other districts are struggling as well. So more information will come, as I stated, that this would be a good topic for a learning session as well. And the second thing is about being born on community is our curriculum and new cycle and how we're adjusting that. And our curriculum needs to be meeting the last three Mondays. And today, we have an agenda developed for professional development day on February 24th. And we're looking at introducing our new cycle, what that's going to look like, and then also providing time for staff to be able to work on their curriculum needs. And I also wanted to give a quick update on our ELC building. You may have heard that our furnace has just died. I believe it's close to about 20 years old. So we'll be replacing the furnace. Mr. Plank, I've updated that, updating about that today. So that should be happening soon. And then finally, I'd also like to recognize the Board of Education and thank you for your service to the community. This month is School Board Awareness Month. We do have certificates for each of the board members. And we do have a small celebration for you after the meeting as well. So again, thank you on behalf of the community for serving in the full week and the community of Holy and all of our staff for students.
Thank you. And we'll move on to the side room. So do you have anything to add?
With all of our thank you for all of the... Thank you, Mr. Perry.
No, I guess it's been last Friday and Saturday, Dr. Bemidji. It's our first year that we've had triple best summer here in Holy. They participated for the first time ever in the section tournament up there. We had two section champions. So I want to just make it that I acknowledge both Olivia Sauer and Handel Bechormson, who were second champs. And we'll be competing in delicate celebrations at the end of the month, the state tournament. So thanks all of our best coaches and all the people that made it possible for the first season of our Pino Rassies.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you, our board members. I know for appreciation that month, we wanted to draw a good first to one. Go with Mr. Perry. I don't need to say it again.
Thank you. We will note that we have some meeting and event notices coming up on March 4th. We have a closed school board meeting, and that will be evaluation of Dr. Perry. And it's kind of a six-month check-in with her and the board. And then on March 18th, we have a regular school board meeting, again, starting at 6:00 PM. And at this time, there's opportunity for board members to kind of do some committee reporting. We had a special kind of work session on January 31st, and we did go over our board norms. We also discussed board committees and some review of the 200 policies, which are policies for board enrollment. And within that work session, it was decided as a group that we are going to kind of get back to our committee reports. And so just going down the list here, I don't believe the boosters in that, Bettin Sterns would be Mr. Ken Anderson, Bill Davis Brown, I don't believe that since the last quarter. Certified contracts, our licensed staff and our EAs. I'll just start with FUB and the teachers' union. We absolutely look forward to the mediation session that's coming up on February 22nd. I wanted to reiterate and state that we as a board and administration value our employees, of course, and looking forward to working towards a fair and ethical agreement. And as board members, we do have fiduciary responsibility to our community. And through this process, the district has remained open to negotiation with the teachers' union, FUB. And regarding the EAs, we are continuing negotiations. We're having a struggle with scheduling. Union reps seem to be a little stretched thin with their schedules and other districts and other responsibilities. But we do have some March dates on the books for the EAs. We also have a tentative agreement with our first chair of this group. So I wanted to thank the negotiating committees for their time and the dialogues. I also believe we have West Drivers Tenderness Agreement. Stephanie and I are on that group. Yeah, so we have a tentative with the drivers as well. And as far as our other groups, we are remaining negotiating. We have upcoming sessions with the law, I believe scheduled at this point. Okay, do you need CCS?
Do you not met?
Not met, okay. And then Finex did meet, correct?
We met. Yes, we did. We met a few weeks ago, and we discussed the budget.
Okay. And I know there's been communication regarding that. Holy Area Foundation, I don't believe has met since January. Some of these committees that we have board members on meet very frequently or even sometimes once a year. Insurance, we haven't met. MSBA, Minnesota State High School, the policy, we have not met since January. There's two pending evaluations. As I noted, will be attached probably on March 4th. And I think that is it for our committee reports. Do any of the other board members have a committee report they want to give this evening? Anything I want to mention? Okay. And we have an opportunity at this point for a board member conference. Wayne, do you have anything you would like to add to the meeting? Okay, Stephanie? Sharon?
I want to draw attention to our AAA award winners for 2024, Gavin Rose and Macy Zabodsky. Also, our XL award nominees are Weston Harris and Madeline Adkison. I want to congratulate these dedicated students, and they make us shine, backing down times to celebrate times.
And I just want to thank the board members that are here and not here. We had a couple of really good board work sessions recently. I mentioned about the one on January 31st. And then we also, on February 7th, had MSBA here, Tiffany Guston and Katie Landrue. And they gave us a training here for our board. And it was entitled Mutual Expectations. There's still opportunities for board member trainings. Right now, I'm going through phase two. It's a virtual session that I'm able to do online. And then I hope to see some of my fellow board members at the officers' training workshop, which is, in this case, putting that on on Saturday, March 17th. And that is all I have for this evening. And I thank my fellow board members as well for our school board appreciation week. We put in a lot of dollars, which is wonderful. We're all happy to be here. And I just would need a motion and a second for the chairman. Second. Motion is made by Wayne, seconded by Sharon, for chairman. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye or opposed? And we will now be meeting at 6:30 PM. Thank you very much.